Mr. Chairman.
Hey, welcome everybody in the audits and those on YouTube. Today is Monday, September 9th. This is our Weekly County Commissioner Meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks everyone. We call the meeting to order at this time. If there's no additions or corrections, I entertain the motion to approve the agenda.
Don't know of any corrections, so I would move that we approve the agenda for September 9th.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're gonna get right into our agenda. This is an action items. Candace, come on up. These are claims, borderer claims. And I didn't see any junior college.
No, no junior college this week.
And the only question I had on it was there was two invoices for the GIS person. Is that last month and this month or?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure we're not getting double paid.
No, we're not.
Okay.
I have a question on janitorial services. So we've just been, I guess they did finally come in and vacuum up. When is the last that we're paying these guys?
In September.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Like their last payment?
Next payment would be the last payment, I believe, unless it's my understanding. And I think my understanding, Commissioner Mopkin, Mr. Chairman, is that Scott is in contact with the company because I don't know if they have complied with all of the contracts, including the waxing of the floors. So I do believe that there is some conversations.
I wanted to make sure that we were probably paid the last bill. And then the other one was the concessions, the fair concessions, the power installation. I was trying to figure out, it looks like that came out of Scott's budget. So I was trying to figure out.
It shouldn't come out of, right.
Instead of Scott's.
That was out of the 250,000.
They're donating a portion of that or something out of his budget. We need to just double verify that.
Okay.
I know that Scott's gone starting today till.
Right.
Almost the end of the month, but I think we do need to verify that that's out of his budget versus.
Arpa? Okay, I can do that. You guys wanna see the board orders?
Money we gave them, the 200, the Arpa?
Yeah, Arpa. But right now it's out of his budget.
Oh, I didn't look that close.
I'm aware it should be.
Okay, yeah, make sure it goes out of Arpa, not his budget.
Okay.
Okay, you good on that? I'll make a motion to pay the claims and the borderer claims.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, come on up.
All fire wise.
So we've got a bunch of them here.
Yeah, I've got a bunch of fireworks.
Are you gonna be Rita for this month?
That's what I think called. Sorry, I know most of it. This part's new.
Always good to learn new things.
Yeah. Better order, you wanted to stay up here.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Mopkin, I apologize, but that fair concessions power came out of the fair ground expenses.
Oh, good.
So that, that's, I would recommend that we just keep it.
Yep, that's good.
Sorry for.
I try and track those codes and stuff, but I get lost in the middle of all that stuff.
Remember how many yards Doug went into the front step out here?
I don't remember.
Man, 18 grand for concrete. That's what must be going through the roof. That's not that much concrete.
Come down.
These two?
Yes.
That's the removal.
No, the removal is separate than the contract or the concrete. Oops, wait a minute, this goes with it. We flow, but I'm real steady. This is from rodeo grounds. And here's. Do you know, these are where they're gonna come in and finish that building?
I asked Mr. Chairman last week and they were unsure.
They were unsure.
Scott was going to be looking into that.
Funnel.
No, 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 I got that.
You're a G4 winner.
You're talking about building at the fairground.
Yeah, just finish siding it and get it all closed up for the winter. Thank you. Have a great day. If we miss one, come back.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on down. Our next agenda item is elected official report. First one up, and Sheriff. Morning.
Morning.
Catching up on any sleep?
No. No, not much of that going on right now. I guess the first thing we can do is talk about these contracts. Then I can kinda get you up to date a little bit on the fires.
Okay, so you wanna do the LexiPoles first?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get that done first. So these have been sourced and ran through the legal department. And ones for the jail, ones for patrol, for LexiPole contracts, for policy for both jail and patrol. Actually, general sheriff's.
So we got two. One for the jail and one for the sheriff's office. So let's do the jail one first. So. This is no.
This is what we discussed for the budget. For some reason, it was gonna be in next year's budget, though. So this is actually coming out of this year's budget?
No, it's for the October 1st, but we have to get things going to where that policy gets here by October 1st. It's not gonna come out of.
Yeah, we're just.
Right. We're just entering the contract for the 1st of October.
So this is a total of 27,986, 25, correct?
Yes, jail.
Okay, so I'll make the motion then that we signed the LexiPole master service agreement with Valley County Jail. On second?
On second.
Move to second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll just hold them there, Kevin, and I will move down to the LexiPole for the sheriff's department. And that one was. 17,546.
Yes.
And I think it is important that we do this. So we all have the exact same policies.
Yes.
So expensive.
It's pretty robust. A lot of this, it's not gonna be as expensive following years. There's quite a bit of implementation. And then they'll also take, cause with the other policy, we've written a lot of addendums. Every time we see a shortage, we write a policy and they're gonna incorporate those in as well. And so there's a lot of migration from one into the other and pretty robust policy.
Okay, so you wanna make the motion?
Yep, I will move that we approve the LexiPole master service agreement for the sheriff's office.
I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now you can bring them up, Kevin, if you want.
Policies, subscriptions of 13, 5, basically per year.
I'm sorry, what?
13, 5, basically per year, implementation 17, 5, so.
This is the ninth.
Look tired. I can't imagine you guys, it's just heart wrenching when we think too, I mean, we can sit today and be measurable, anything. The only good part about constantly turning over these fire guys is that maybe you're getting arrested crew or they just make them go for more.
What, you're like crew four now?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, give me one second. I'm just working on a couple of things at this time. It's the old saying, life's too short to hurry through it.
Yeah, the next two days are gonna be.
When will they fly at Big Creek and Edward's Rock? Is that gonna be today?
I haven't seen an update on the size of these. I can only imagine what they are after looking at that fire last night.
Yeah, that, um, I heard that. So as you guys know, the lava fire has turned into quite the issue. That has, that has come to over 30,000 acres. It has touched Boulder, a more of the top. It's all the way in Adams County. I talked to Adams County Sheriff about seven o'clock this morning. He issued a whole bunch of orders all the way into Indian Valley. We did have a new start on West Mountain. And that is about a half mile north of the Four Corners footprint between Deer Creek and Silver Creek. And the fire chief and I were out watching that last night through binoculars and it was, it was hot. So they did have manpower on it last night and.
South of the wall?
I'm sorry?
South of the wall.
Between the two, I believe. At nighttime, it is so hard to pinpoint them and where they're at, cause you don't have any landmarks. So the chief hole and I were sitting there going, is that Deer Creek? Or is that, you're trying to figure out where it is because you have no landmarks. It's just dark other than this fire up there. So.
So that's right above God's Acres, then?
It is above God's Acres, yes, so. And then I got calls last night that there was two more starts Edwardburg and Big Creek area. They're gonna fly it today. Understand Forest Service has zero resources. They're, the best they can do is try to protect structures, but they have nothing to fight that with.
You know what direction it is from Big Creek?
I do not. They're gonna fly it. They just said their starts and people were trying to get out of there.
It's on a good side, so to speak.
It's, you know how dry it is back there? It's gonna take off. And between all these fires right here where towns are involved, Forest Service just does not have the manpower. Last night, because of this fire, Fire Incident Command said that they were good with evacuation orders. As they have them, I disagreed with that. I went ahead and made their next two zones, six and seven, to set rather than just ready. I just, I wasn't comfortable with that fire where it was. And so I just went ahead and upgraded those two since we couldn't pinpoint exactly where they were. I just, I'd rather be safe than sorry. So we sent that out. As you know, east side is, you guys saw that, I'm sure too. It's, it's coming down that hill. They're hoping it holds up on, on some roads that they have identified. But we do already have some action point, trigger points set to go ahead and start upgrading back into horse thief and then everything, if it comes back this way into Clear Creek and, and Gold Dust. So today and tomorrow are gonna be pivotal days, very pivotal days. I don't think we're gonna have the wind we did yesterday, but we're still supposed to have wind. If this cap comes off, that's when you get the radiant heating from the sun and that's when things just take off. And those are, it's just hard. So yeah, not a lot of sleep for the next few days. Wednesday, we're supposed to get really high humidity, maybe some rain and cooler temperatures. So I think that's gonna help these next two days. Making its own weather. It was having its own wind. It was having its own thunderstorms. It, it was literally, it was spicy yesterday afternoon. And so, so we're gonna keep watching it. We're gonna keep working it. We're, we're, we're watching it by the minute, as you know. We're, we're, we're in bed pretty deep with icy. I've got both my lieutenants over there at that meeting right now, so I could be here with you folks. But if anything changes, I will keep you guys in touch and I'll, I'll make sure I call you and let you know cause we're surrounded.
Okay.
Appreciate that. If there's anything you need from us, I don't know how the Cascade Fire Fund is holding up. If they need additional resources, you know, that's a donation fund. I mean, if we had to to come up with 2,500 bucks or, you know, something to help out.
Okay.
Then please let us know.
So far, we're holding our own. I don't, by the grace of God, we've kept.
The next two days are really important.
It's, I mean, it's right above Raspberry Ranch. It's right above it.
Um, you've got one more action item. I accept the donation by Idaho County for that.
Yes, so as you guys know, you get, the commission was nice enough to approve an ambulance box for the UTV McCall Fire. I went back to my office and realized that I pulled stats, saw how many times we went into Idaho County with that to help them, just because of where logistics it is. And there were several. So I went ahead and wrote a letter to the Idaho County Sheriff and he said that he would present it to his commission. And I, and I asked if they could help on that. So what they did is they sent us a $5,000 check to help cover some of the cost of that box, so. I tried, I figured a squeaky wheel gets the grease and it did this time, so.
And it worked, that's awesome.
Oh, yes, if we could.
We'll thank those commissioners when we see them at the end of the month.
Yeah, we're gonna see them here in a few weeks.
Excellent.
We'll move that we accept the donation from Idaho County for the patient transport box of $5,000.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, tell everyone to be safe out there.
Anybody questions or anything that I can maybe answer? It's, it's pretty quickly moving. So I think we're gonna, we're setting a community meeting at the Cascade Fire tomorrow night at 7:00. Okay?
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Okay, we're gonna move right into department heads. Building Department, that?
Raspberry Ranchers, is that by the boat dock?
That's, uh, uh, who are you guys?
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I know how that goes. We got 303 permits to date and it's just busy, that's all. It's just, everybody's trying to hurry and. But as I was telling Sherry earlier, we're not gonna do any inspections in this set area. We're not gonna be in the way, nothing. So they can send pictures and we are telling them, send pictures and wait for an approval by email. So you have proof.
Good.
You're good to go. And if you go further than that, then you might have consequences. You might have to get, if it's concrete, you may have to get x-rays or something like that, so.
Good.
Well, and I strongly disagree with anybody continuing on in that set area and getting in the way of anybody that's trying to work this fire, so.
Okay. But I mean, even if frame, even anything, we're not gonna.
I wouldn't think it'd be wise to be framing a house with a forest fire coming. I would think you.
There's a couple of places going over there that, that may, it wouldn't surprise me. There's a couple of God's Acres.
Better make sure they have fire insurance on that structure. A lot of guys forget to put their stuff on and.
Yeah, I don't know. Two of them at God's Acres.
Everything's good for you as far as being able to come and go and.
Yeah, we're staying with some friends in Clear Creek.
Well, let us know if you need anything from us.
I will, thank you.
Which hopefully the GOAT Fire doesn't make you evacuate from Clear Creek.
Yeah, hopefully not.
Well, the worst that could happen is it could come down on the highway, close the highway. Now we are in trouble because we lose all of our support. They gotta bring it around the other, all the food and water and everything else those guys use, so.
We're kinda more in the, where I'm staying is back behind the storage sheds there. Hopefully.
Hopefully.
So we'll just see what happens.
You kinda look at your place, so we'll go, hmm, it's could burn if it got down there, so.
Oh, yeah. Let's make sure that everybody's doing their fire mitigation. We're, we've done ours, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks a bit, have a great day. Uh, John?
So sorry for.
Good morning.
Thursday can't come soon enough, apparently. Fire situation. DeeDee's not here, obviously. She's at the Juvenile Justice Conference in Idaho Falls. Nikki went with her as well and Steve. So here I am.
Hopefully they can breathe a little better than we can.
I don't know if it'd be, it's gotta be better over there, right?
I.
Who knows? It's bad. It's been, yesterday in New Meadows, looking south, I could see that plume. It looked like a volcano had erupted down there. It was like, I can't believe that, so.
A lot of heat going up.
Oh, yeah. It was about three o'clock in the afternoon and it was hot and that thing was taking off, so. It was pretty crazy from that angle, actually. As far as the probation department, just some real quick things to report on. We did have our new interns start last week, Nick Monahan. He's just getting his feet wet. DeeDee's got a list of to-do items for him. Some of that's gonna incorporate maybe helping with court, court hearing attendance and maybe referring some of our new clients to the assigned probation officers. We're also gonna train him up on urine testing and the chain of custody that goes along with that. That'll help alleviate some of our workload as far as the client's testing.
He's a smart kid.
Yeah, I think he's gonna.
Around Valley County once he.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I think he's gonna, he's gonna do really well for us and provide some help. We also might have him, uh, we're not gonna have a managed caseload, but we're gonna have him just touch on what we do and how we do it. It's kind of our business model.
How long do you have him for?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not sure how long DeeDee has him lined up for, but it's new and we'll see how it all goes. But so far, so good. As far as our caseloads, Steve's numbers are up on the unsupervised. He's around 165. He's usually hovered around 130, so got some more unsupervised that he's managing. As far as the juvenile probation goes, I think Nikki is in full command at this point. She's got the full juvenile caseload. And she's currently has 10 supervised juvenile cases. She's got 13 diversions that she oversees. She's also over four pre-trial juvenile, pre-trial cases.
Nobody's in detention?
Not, not currently. And she's got one courtesy supervision juvenile, a real tan, tan transfer to Kami County that she's working on currently. So she's busy, she's got a lot on her plate, but she, seems like she's more than capable of handling it. As far as Molly and I, our caseload combined direct supervised, we're at 105. Our numbers have ticked up as well. And we did, we ran some data statistics, rough statistics on kind of our, just to give you an idea of some of the dynamics of the cases we get assigned to us. We found that roughly 57% of our new cases are alcohol related, typically DUI, open container. 12% are drug related, really drug related charges that we end up with. Keep in mind, that 57% alcohol related, they get caught because they're drinking and driving. But once we start working with them, we find out that they have a polysubstance use disorder and there's drugs involved in a lot of those people as well.
Now, that's a new word I haven't heard, polysubstance abuse.
That's a big one for me.
Wow.
But I like New Meadows, that's a big word for me. So we find out there's more going on than just the alcohol. So and then we have a pretty significant caseload percentage wise for violent crime related, 29%. That, you know, domestic violence, misdemeanor battery, sexual battery, resisting those types of charges. And an interesting statistic that we ran of those of our, and this, everything I've gone over so far is not our total caseload. I'm, we're leaving out things like petty theft or, you know, the minimal, minimal charges that don't reflect some of the, I've gone over, so. This isn't our total number, but 20.
That 29% violent crime, is that an increase?
It's, I think it is an uptick and, and this next data point is kinda leans into that. A lot of the, a lot of the cases were originally charged as felony domestic, felony batteries. They get pled down to a misdemeanor level due to the circumstances of the charge. I'm not sure how the prosecutor works out those plea deals or comes to those conclusions, but 23% of our, of our misdemeanor cases were originally charged as felonies and got pled down to a misdemeanor. And a large portion of those were the violent crime charges.
Were they mostly interfamily crimes, Jack, or?
Yeah, yeah. That's what, a large portion of what we see. So that was interesting that we ran some of those numbers to get our heads around kinda what we deal with on a daily basis. I think that's all I've got for you guys.
On the poly use abuses, has fentanyl, is it going away, is it still prevalent?
So far, we have seen, you know, we had a little uptick there where we had an issue with a couple of clients, but I have not seen that resurface the last few months.
I think people are probably scared of it now because it's like, whoa, wait a minute, this could kill you.
I take the words out, but it's pretty dangerous stuff to mess with.
Okay.
If you're addicted, you're addicted and you're going after the highest hit you can find. I just watched the whole thing on fentanyl and it is so scary.
It's, it's tragic and scary.
And why anyone, anyone would do it even once. It's.
Well, even the.
But we're not. That big stuff.
Even the people that don't know they're.
Unintentional overdoses, you know, are, it's just a scary world.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great, be safe.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next one is Melissa.
The Godfather of Fentanyl is a documentary that's out there.
Yeah.
It's worth the time to sit and.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the 4H Youth Development Updates, they're doing a fair review tomorrow night. And then they have recognition night next Tuesday night. And then club audits, leaders in sale, follow-up, and then 4H state and district meetings. So that's an update for 4H. As far as what I've been up to, I had a Community Educators Alliance, Association, whatever they are, the CEA meeting, which continues to be a productive space that people value. And we were talking about community calendar and we had Josh Hurley come and present on that and talk about people coming in to kinda play with that feature and see if more organizations can adopt it. So then we can just have a central point where people are communicating. So that was the topic of focus there, continuing to work on the Natural Resource Management Plan. I really like the Wyoming template and I called and spoke with the county association office there, the natural resource point person, and so they gave me verbal permission to use that template. And so I'll be attending the BSU meeting tomorrow, just to see if there's overlap or what that looks like or if there's redundancy. But I think I'm, I'm gonna be at a point soon where I'm just gonna pause and put a needle in it, a pin in it, and make sure that there's onboard support with the commissioners before too much time's invested into it. But the thing I like about the Wyoming, and I won't go too in, much into the weeds, but they essentially identify kinda the data that exists around that topic, multiple agencies. And then they have objectives, which basically can be pulled straight from the comprehensive plan with Valley County. And then they have the kind of action steps. And so each, each section has those three different layers of saying like, what do we know about it? With the existing resource, what are our county objectives and what specific actions? Essentially like who's in charge by what timeline and what will be accomplished? So those kinda three different structures. So it's really, I feel like it's very clear. So that, yeah, I'm excited to share that. I think it's coming along nice, but as far as the whole data acquisition, that's a lot, gonna be a lot of work. So if BSU has anything to plug into that section, that would be great. So looking forward to that meeting tomorrow. Elzar Service Days, continue to have a good relationship with them and syncing up their student volunteer days with community garden efforts. And so this year, we're planning one for this Friday. They'll be up at the Bienvenidos Community Garden. And then they were planning one for October that'll be done at the Pride of the Pantry Plots. Continuing to try to find funding and resources because the fence is literally falling to the ground at the Pride of the Pantry Plots one. It's been 10 years of depreciation. And so resource finding, volunteer plugging in and trying to make the infrastructure in those spaces.
The deer will find it in a second.
I know.
They ate half my tomatoes last night or night before last.
Yeah, we were lucky one night, the fences were down and the deer didn't find it, which is great.
Yet.
Yeah. They were able to get repaired, so they can't get in, but yeah. And then working with Creative District Food Coalition and then closing other community garden spaces. And the construction field days to either build those out or maintain the infrastructure.
I think everybody on page with the Resource Management Plan will be a good, good conversation. Any question whether they're gonna be put on the shelf? Actually Wyoming and Utah are both suing the federal government right now using their resource management plan.
Good, good.
Their bases. So there is already data out there showing how these can be effective.
It'll be interesting to watch that. I think one of the big first topics that you guys, hopefully I'll sort of be involved with it, but we've gotta figure out a way to stop obliterating roads in the national. I think one of the big first topics that you guys, hopefully I'll sort of be involved with it, but we've got to figure out a way to stop obliterating roads in the national forest. Because every farm meeting I've been to, they're taking it to the road. That's where they're gonna hold the line. Well, if you obliterate all the roads, you're never gonna get control. So that would, to me, would be my first emphasis to stop obliterating these roads when you go in and do a logy job or whatever. For fire breaks and for recreation. I think that's huge for Valley County. Um, the other issue, Melissa, that I need to talk to you about is, I don't know if you've noticed, but in our senior center here at Cascade is closed for this month. And we can't find volunteers, people to help run that. I don't know if there's an apprenticeship or if there's any kind of programs where we could get volunteers to come up and help with that. The issue is the health of the board members. They're, they're all having health issues. And right now they're not eating meals for this month for our seniors in Cascade.
There is a senior corps, like an AmeriCorps, but four seniors where seniors can do an AmeriCorps type service. And it gives them, you know, the health benefits and the small stipend that they can give to their grandparent, their grandkids or themselves. It would be, I don't know, something that would essentially give like a point person, a keeper of that space, that they would, you know, turn over. So it might be a good supportive type of position to like a ED or some sort of administrative position that gets paid.
That's what we really need is more administration, secretarial, keeping tracks of the books, writing paychecks, that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Do they have a staff position supporting it?
They did, but they have health issues and they've had to resign. We have one person left on that board and he's not, he just doesn't have time to do it all. And so I'm trying to get the word out. We need volunteers. We need some folks to step up. Um, the issue is that if, like the church that rents part of it wanted to do it, but if we do that, then we lose that funding. It can't be tied to a religious organization and still receive triple A funding and wheels on wheels funding and all that stuff. So it's kind of a challenge right now and I could sure use your help if you could look into that. Senior Corps might be something that, right now the county, I think we give them eleven thousand dollars a year. Basically that's to pay the cook. And we, of course, pay all the power and maintenance and all that here, so.
I can also just see how, I know, I know those, uh, centers are difficult to fund, but I could see how McCall is doing it and where they're getting their funding to have their staff point person. Cause I think that having that key person is, is a good.
Very key.
Yeah, because they're the people that are organizing the volunteers and it's hard to have just volunteers organize themselves. It's possible, but, um, having a key person, I think, always makes it stronger.
You want to think about it and get back to me sometime this week and see what we can come up with. Try to put that back together.
Right now we're at risk then. We got CBD grant we received.
I've already been talking to Ken about it. And we've got until the end of twenty-six to spend that money. And that was just to upgrade the building, windows and doors and a few other things, but, um, we've got to find somebody that we can get in there to file for the triple A funding every year. And for, there's a lot of paperwork to do to keep that funding coming and that's not happening.
Is there money for a staff person? So it just needs to be hired or?
From the county there is, but normally, I don't know if you remember.
You don't have money to hire a, I mean, it's eleven thousand dollar donation from the county.
They used to use the triple A funding to pay for the board to kind of keep it together and pay staff. But if you have anybody that applies for the triple A, you'll get it. And that's what's happened.
Okay.
So if you could work on that or help me with that, that'd be great.
Yeah, if you have a point person to put me in touch with, like a email introduction or even a phone number. Okay.
And I'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Uh, the next victim is Human Resources, Mike.
Morning.
Morning. Um, just real quick, piggybacking on your last conversation with Melissa, we could announce one out on our website looking for a volunteer for the senior center.
Well, that would be awesome.
I mean, it's, um, we just put on there, you know, again, I would need the point contact information, but we could get, you know, you're looking to get the word out. That reaches a lot of hands.
Well, there's one guy left on the board, Rick McCoy, who's kind of running the show right now. And I do have his contact information. I'll get that to you. Uh, I want to involve him with it because he's, he's the energy behind it all right now, but he's just ran out of staff and can't do it by himself, so.
The only concern I have with doing that is you're opening a box.
Yeah.
This is, we have a hundred nonprofits in Valley County.
Well, I think where this is a, well, of course we fund the nonprofits too, but we're the county money behind this.
County money behind it, correct, yeah.
Need to help.
Let me know if you'd like me to.
Okay.
Anyway, along that note, uh, just a quick update, I'm obviously recruiting for a number of positions right now with the county, including our new positions that we authorized for fiscal year twenty-five. All of our current recruitments that are out are showing the new rates of pay for, uh, FY twenty twenty-five. We don't have anybody in the pipeline at the moment close to being hired on. So if we, um, had an applicant today interview, uh, and be offered a job, chances are they wouldn't be starting before October one anyway. Uh, and, um, we are receiving applications. And those applications are being forwarded on to the hiring managers for consideration for interviews. Also, we are in open enrollment right now on our employee benefit package, uh, which primarily affects our health insurance and life insurance benefits. As I've indicated in my email, anything regarding our retirement plans, the Percy Choice 401K or anything like that, it's always open and available for making changes. But anybody wishing to make changes to their health insurance plan, uh, the flexible spending account, um, or any life insurance plans does need to get that information into me before the end of next week. I will be sending out a reminder email probably about a week from now. And then just lastly, with the fire going on, obviously everybody's stress levels are higher than normal. Uh, this is a bad fire year. Um, I've had a couple of requests from employees for information regarding our employee assistance program or our EAP program. I'm going to be sending an email out today just to all the staff, reminding them that that, those services are available free of charge and completely confidential. Uh, and, um, in for, you know, the, the phone number on there as well. Uh, definitely either refer them to me or that email that I'm going to be sending out today. So that's pretty much what I got going on right now.
Good. Any questions for Mike?
Uh, we were just discussing a little bit though, the conversation around evacuation zones. We need to kind of broaden that conversation and see how we can help our employees and what that looks like.
Absolutely. Yeah, let me know and I'll be happy to put something out as well if you want. All right. Thank you.
Uh, Jeremy.
By the way, that was a fifty dollar fine.
I wondered if anybody caught that.
Good morning. What was that?
I said that was a fifty dollar fine.
What was?
Our phones go off. That's a fifty dollar fine.
It's okay. Just leave the check here.
Neil owes us like five thousand. Don't worry about it.
Um, so, uh, I'm just, basically I went to IT conference last Wednesday. That was, that's always.
I saw you in a picture.
There was a pic, there was a picture of me?
There was.
Item Association of Counties newsletter. You made front page.
You did.
I just showed up for the picture. And, you know, the, a bunch of coming to an end and starting and kind of, you know, working through those purchases and stuff and looking at, still looking at stuff we need for the Maritidal Building when that finally gets going. And then, um, a big thing I've been kind of working on, you know, it's hard, best I can, this has never happened before. So we just have to, if it happens, do the best that we can, but kind of a plan for, um, if Cascade does need to evacuate, how can we get at least base critical stuff back up at the annex and?
It's a good test for our emergency plan.
Yeah, yeah. A list of like critical stuff that grab and take down there and get hooked up and run in. And, you know, if, even if we had to move, the building would still be here, so everything would still work. But then, you know, if power goes out, you know, how to get like the CAD server back up and some of the, you know, the very basic core critical stuff that we would need to, need to work, so.
Something you have to grab or is it already off-site location?
There's some stuff I would, I would take with me.
But if you're in Donley and you can't get here, then that's what we need to start thinking about.
Yeah, and through this process, it has, uh, brought up, uh, some things I'm thinking about making some changes on for sure, um, going forward. So absolutely, it's, yeah, it's, it's been a good process as far as like, I should, I should have this down there. I should already have this down there that haven't been there before, so.
Well, and I think the, the issue is it's going to be priorities. What's the first priority? Second down the line. Of course jail is pretty high up and so is security sheriff's department. We gotta keep those two opening and going.
Yeah.
That's probably the biggest priority and then the rest of it can be postponed a day or two or three until things change, but.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, off- citing some of that stuff and backing it up that way. I mean, it may be you can't get here, so that's something we have to think about. Building may or may not be standing, so anybody that leaves paperwork on their desk every night, thinking you're gonna get it.
I thought that, I thought about, you know, if like this building is up in flames, then if, if the fire's gotten this far into town, there's probably a lot of.
There's gonna be some bigger issues.
But that doesn't mean that I couldn't take out a power pole or melt through some fiber and take out the internet or some other.
Even the main transmission line here would be a big hit. And then the other thing I want to tell you is I've been getting hit a lot with some pretty crummy emails. I've been deleting like crazy. I don't know if I'm on the list or what, but I appreciate the one on the SIPA deal because I did get that. I didn't open it, but.
Yes, yeah, like I said last time.
These things and what is this?
Seems like just in the last few.
Man, they've been hammering it hard.
Uptick of agencies getting compromised and sending out those emails and it's.
Everybody be careful what you open up.
Senator Jeremy, yelp.
It's hard out there these days.
Hard out there these days. Hey, any more questions for Jeremy? If not, we're gonna move on.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Cindy.
Good morning. Okay, so, you know, I've told you before that Todd's going to the, um, conference in October. Well, he got a scholarship for five hundred ninety-five dollars. Yay. Um, we're not really slowing down at all. I mean, and they're not big subdivisions and things like that. It's variances and solar panels and things that take just as much time as a large subdivision.
Saw your agenda, the Laurie said, I'm going, how are you guys going to get all that done on a meeting?
We do. Um, I will be gone next week at a floodplain conference. Um, I will be here first thing Monday morning to present a final plot and then I'm going to take off.
Good. That's the sixteenth. Okay. Okay.
I met with Dan Koontz and Oki and Jeff last week and we talked about development agreements and processes and things like that. We think it's probably best if we meet once a month. And, and talk about each one of them that are, are coming down the line. Because we would like to present something that is more of a finished product, um, when it gets to the board of county commissioners.
I really appreciate that Cindy, because I feel like it's almost like a subcommittee, you guys put it all together and get it done. Cause you literally don't have time to do all that and keep up with everything else. And if we could, this is your recommendation, just like a final plot and boom, we do it and move on. If we have any issues, we can bring them up then, but.
Will we be able to get it far enough in advance that if we do have some?
It'll always come out in your packet.
So we can respond then at least before the final.
Right, because I'll put them together. Um, it's a development agreement, not just a road development agreement. So there might be other things that are included in that development agreement. And then, you know, Dan will make sure he gives me his information. Then we'll send it through Oki, uh, to make sure that, you know, there's no takings involved. And then we'll get it scheduled on your agenda and it'll come out the packet the week before. It's kind of our process, but we do want to get together and have these meetings once a month. And we, so we have a set meeting. And we're just busy. Anything for me?
Um, you guys, you said, you're.
Once a month.
Is that gonna be enough? I think that'll be enough. I guess as things pick up, you could always go two or three.
All right, now we're, we're gonna meet once a month, talk about development agreements. Make sure we're all still flying down the same page.
Okay, just writing some notes here.
Well, you know, Dan's kind of doing the process.
Where's your floodplain conference? Seattle again?
No, I, I don't think I've gone to Seattle. Pasco.
Pasco, Washington. Well, that's short.
Oh, I mean, it's so excited and floodplains, you know, love it.
Take the BSU risk map with you and show people what we're doing on, on, uh, our flood stuff, information that's on it.
Okay.
On the website, yeah.
Thank you.
It is, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, Larry is not in today, so we're gonna go tomorrow.
And by the way, I missed the pickleball deal.
You did? That was a hoot.
Was it?
I'm glad that place was packed.
It's packed. Twenty minutes before it started, I looked at my calendar and went, well, I'm still in my pajamas. I'm gonna go around for the day. I'm not going.
Well, you missed the picture.
I apologized to the pickleball club.
Good morning. So I have a bunch of landowner agreements that we need to get signed. Most of these ones are actually for the GNA agreement up there in King's Pine. I have seventeen landowners that are thirty-one up there already signed up.
Wow, that's awesome.
Good, good. So what I'd like to do is just approve them all at once. And I know you sent us a separate on each one, but we can just do, approve them all at once and do it that way. Speed up things. Does that work for you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we approve the landowner agreements for fired hazard, hazardous fuel reductions as presented by our wildland. Whatever your title is.
As a resource person, what are we gonna title?
Wildfire mitigation director.
There we go.
Wildfire mitigation director. Thank you. It's a fun one.
Okay, so I made a motion to, and I'll second that motion for the landowner agreements for the hazardous fuels reduction. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then later today I'll have a bid opening at one thirty. We can call you our WMD. Is that like? Isn't that like?
What is a mass destruction? Is that a good idea?
That's what I was thinking. It, it's a title for something that's probably not good.
I'm a weapon of mass destruction. That's just a mail that was, see, we'll get one. Is another bid?
There's, uh, four more.
Got in my office, okay. I think that's the general mail, just to leave, I don't know.
Pretty soon we won't have anything to mitigate.
Oh my goodness, or we're gonna get too busy.
Then they start the bear process. That could be. See, I just wonder how much money a day is going out right now, but it's over two million a day easily.
Fire fourteen years and I've only ever seen this once in California on the car fire, where you have like ash and stuff going thirty miles away. That's wild.
I was on the call last week, um, I was supposed to be in DC this week for the SRS funds. So I asked them to accumulate the number of acres under fire right now in Idaho. And if they don't send us SRS funds, how that impacts. So that might be a heavy conversation we have back there. Like the thing I'm.
I did this last night, standing underneath it. And that thunderhead that thing built, looked like a volcano had gone on.
It's freaky. Thunderstorm.
Oh my gosh, it's like, I didn't want to stand under this thing.
Yeah, it's a crazy time right now.
Your husband safe?
He's out on a wilderness fire.
Where's that?
Um, Allen Frank Church.
Was he at Frank Church on that one?
Yep.
I have another one at Pittsburgh and.
Two more out there.
Is he, do you know where they are out there? West or east or south?
I don't know that way.
That's, but I can sure is where they are. If they're on the north side, we're okay.
He's on one that's by a bunch of cabins. And so he's doing structural protection specifically. He's the IC on it. So he's got a bunch of sprinklers up and all that kind of stuff.
He's sent out the fire map on lava and it's up to forty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three. He sent out the new fire map on lava and it's up to forty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-three. And it was twenty-eight hundred yesterday?
Yep. It grew two thousand acres. Yep.
No, it was thirty-eight thousand acres.
Yep.
No, forty-four thousand acres in one day. That's lava yesterday morning was before.
It looked like it.
Holy fuck.
Yeah, it's, we just need some rain. Need some rain to have.
Yeah, it's scary.
Anything else?
Nope.
That's it?
Well, you'll see me later today, so.
Oh, we're way ahead of schedule. If I read this right, our next agenda is not till ten thirty. Doug, if you wanna mute us, we'll see everybody back here at ten thirty.